Good evening. Welcome to the September Hoboken Board of Education meeting. We're a few days into the school year and our teachers and our students have hit the ground running and we are very excited for the year ahead. Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of this meeting was published in the local papers on September 7th, 2019. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believe that this meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast at the Board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Files Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the District homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of this meeting. And if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Good, can we please take the roll call, please?
I do apologize if I pronounce your name wrong. It's not intentional. Ms. Katamatori?
Here.
Ms. Delira?
Here.
Mr. Delator?
Here.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Clubfell?
Here.
Ms. McCarr? Ms. Takerion?
Here.
Ms. Angley?
Here.
How'd I do?
Nice to know.
We don't have any student recognitions tonight. We will resume that in October, so we are going to jump straight into the Superintendent's report, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you. Is this on? You can hear me? Mr. Stasia, can you put the presentation on? Thank you. And, you know, if you just slide down a little because I'm going to go this way, just not in the way. Okay. Okay. We'll just give it a minute to warm up a little bit. So, Board of Education members, you don't need to move and go down to the seats or anything like that because you have the presentation in front of you. We'll post this on the website as well. So my Superintendent's report is really kind of an overview of some of the work that we've done over the summer and also some points of pride and things to look forward to in the upcoming school year. So with that being said, our first, our first few slides reflect the work that the Board of Education did along with myself and Assistant Superintendent Ms. Rodriguez Gomez on setting forth our vision, our mission for the district, and our district goals for the year. It also includes our portrait of the Hoboken High School graduate, including some of the new components that we've added into that particular portrait. So with that being said, our newly revised and created mission is that the Hoboken Public School District will prepare confident and resilient graduates who value academic achievement, embrace challenge, honor diversity, appreciate collaboration, and respectfully contribute to their local and wider communities. We were pretty proud of that mission statement because if you actually break the mission statement down, you'll see it woven through the portrait of the graduate. Our vision for the Hoboken School District will be that the district will be recognized as a premier educational choice and widely known as a best practice model for academic growth, high-quality instruction, innovative and equitable programs, engagement, facilities, and personalized pathways that are essential for college career and life preparedness in our ever-changing interconnected global society. So with that being said, each of the components of our vision you're actually going to see are broken down in each of our district goals. So this is the first time that we're reporting out publicly district goals. So for this year and for the next few years, we're actually going to be working toward these particular district goals. So each goal has a focus area. The first district goal focus area is on student achievement, which should make sense as our top priority and what we're focused on in the district each and every day. So this particular goal states that the Hoboken Public School District will implement a rigorous, relevant, and responsive curriculum that meets the needs of all students, fosters personalized pathways for learning, and ensures continuous academic growth. Our second district goal that we're focused on is about empowering staff members. And this particular goal states that the Hoboken Public School District will support its diverse staff in professional growth, encourage them to serve as role models, and empower them to provide the highest quality of instruction for our students. District goal number three, the focus area is unique and innovative programs. The one thing we pride ourselves on is developing, designing, and implementing unique and innovative programs. So this particular goal states that the Hoboken Public School District will develop and implement unique and innovative programs that promote global learning, ensure equitable access, and foster the social, emotional, and academic growth of each student. District goal number four's focus area is on communication and engagement. This particular goal states that the Hoboken Public School District will engage and communicate with families and the wider community to bridge understanding and to advance partnerships. And our last goal is one that we obviously have been thinking a lot about as a result of our growth in enrollment and also our commitment to creating a safe and vibrant learning atmosphere for all of our students and staff, families as well. So the focus area for this goal is on facilities. And it states that the Hoboken Public School District will operate well-maintained in safe facilities that respond to our growing student enrollment, support our academic and co-curricular programs, and promote pride across the city. So with that being said, we have five district goals that we are going to spend the next three years focusing on. We are in the process right now of creating benchmarks for each of these goals so that we have the ability to report out at the end of each and every year what our progress is toward each of those goals so that we can, in the most transparent way, talk to both the community, not only our school families but the community at large, how well we're doing in terms of attaining and meeting those goals. One of the things that is happening in education and in many school districts, not only in the state of New Jersey but also throughout the country, is that districts are creating what's called a portrait or a profile of a graduate. And the portrait or profile of a graduate really reflects the attributes that a school district wants to see its graduates have when they leave the district. So you typically will think about a portrait of a graduate or a profile of a graduate as something that begins when children enter the school system, and each and every year the system is working toward helping the child actually obtain. So with that being said, we designed our portrait of a graduate around our three driving forces in the district: rigor, relevance, and relationships. We know that although they're stated in the order as rigor, relevance, and relationships, that relationships actually have to begin first. So we kind of take it out of order a little in the school district and we focus predominantly on the development of quality and healthy relationships between and among adults, students, students and students, and adults and adults. Once that happens and those relationships are developed and established, we then move on to ensuring that our instructional programs are rigorous and that the curriculum that we're developing for all students is a relevant academic program. So with that being said, we are ensuring that our Hoboken graduates receive rigorous instruction so that they will leave being college-prepared, career-prepared, and that they will have a sense, a strong sense of global awareness. We will also engage all of our students in relevant experiences that are going to build the following skill sets: problem-solving, creative thinking, cross-cultural skills, technology, collaboration, and performance-based skills as well. And lastly, or I should say probably the most important as I stated earlier, is that we want to make sure that all of the relationships that we're developing or helping to develop between and among our students and our faculty foster a range and a host of mindsets. So the mindsets that we felt were most important are the academic mindset, the civic mindset, the empathetic mindset, and the wellness mindset. So we'll be focusing on each and every one of these attributes for our future Hoboken graduates as well. So now on to some of the projects that we have been working on. So we've had a number of staff members in and out of the district throughout the summer working very, very hard with Ms. Rodriguez Gomez in our Office of Curriculum and Instruction to ensure that our curriculum and our programs are up-to-date and are actually exactly what I said before, rigorous and relevant. So with that being said, I just wanted to report out that we have worked to revise our K-8 science curriculum throughout the summer. We didn't really substantially change the content of the curriculum. So our K-8 science curriculum is a combination of a next-generation science standard-driven curriculum, which is through dimensions, as well as the integration of Project Lead the Way that's kind of woven through the curriculum. But one of the things that we did this summer is that we worked very hard on listening to what our high school teachers have told us and the feedback that they have given us in terms of lab writing. We wanted to make sure that we were integrating writing across all curriculum documents but particularly in the area of science and to say that we are ensuring that from kindergarten all the way through eighth grade, by the time kids leave the elementary and the middle school level, they will be extremely, extremely masterful in the participation in science labs and also in the writing of labs as well. So with that being said, you will see in the new science curriculum that's posted on our website that there are labs that are developed for every unit of study and there's a process for lab reports in every single unit of study. We've also worked extremely hard on the K-8 ELA curriculum, and I give kudos to Ms. Rodriguez Gomez and the staff members that worked on that particular curriculum because what they did was they took the ELA curriculum, they continued to integrate and to weave in a core novel approach to every one of the grade levels, but most importantly, we've moved from the core novel piece to the writing piece, and this year for the first time we've embedded a comprehensive word study component to the curriculum as well. So with that being said, when the teachers worked on these particular components, they also developed what's called a night write guide for all teachers. So there's a really neat guide that you can actually access on our website that you can click on each component of every one of the night writes that children will be doing, and there are samples so that you can actually get a sense of the three different types of writing that students will be doing on a daily basis in the evenings. We also took a lot of time this summer rethinking and revamping our social studies curriculum. So interestingly, this is an entirely overhauled curriculum. This is not a revision. We thought about what social studies should look like at the K-5 level and what it should look like on the 6, 7, and 8 level. And what we decided to do was to create a curriculum document that kind of neatly braided the different strands of social studies education. So every single one of the units of study from kindergarten through fifth grade as well as 6, 7, and 8th grade neatly integrate the strands of history, geography, economics, and cultural and global literacy throughout. So, but I think one of the things that's most impressive and I think one of the things that children will truly enjoy and I think parents will also be really impressed with is the fact that the entire curriculum is project-based. So every single one of the units of study begin with essential questions and begin with a, what you would consider a scenario that the kids have to think through throughout the entire unit of study, and there will be a product at the end of every single unit of study. So I think the kids will really enjoy it and I think the teachers will enjoy teaching it as well. At the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade level, we kind of revised the 7th and 8th grade global geography courses, but at the 6th grade level, we overhauled and created a brand-new social studies program that is focused predominantly on American civics. And so the curriculum itself takes you from local government at the elementary level, lower elementary level, to state government at the upper elementary level, to federal government at the middle school level. So by the time the kids leave, they will be exposed to all of the five themes of geography, all of the strands of civics and levels of civics that they need to know by the time they get to high school, and also economics and cultural competencies as well. In addition to that, we spent some time and did revisions to our mathematics curriculum this summer. There was a dashboard that was designed by Ms. Rodriguez Gomez and her staff, Mr. Arnone and some of our other administrators, where they took two organizations that we're working with, EdSite and Linkit, and they created a data dashboard so that we have the ability not only to create ongoing benchmark assessments but also to warehouse and track the data so that we can respond to students' needs on a real-time basis. In addition to that, we also worked on kind of redesigning our K-5 challenges and support program. It's now renamed the Individualized Pathways, Learning Pathways, so ILP as it's now called. And on one of the next slides, I'm actually going to show you some of the enrichment components of the ILP program. 6th through 8th grade, the junior personal growth period, which is modeled after Hoboken High School's PGP period, was also revamped. Dr. Abraham spent a lot of time over the summer with staff members to redesign and recreate that particular program. And you'll also see, if you take a moment, our middle school and high school programs of study have been updated and they're also linked to the website so you can take some time and look at those as well. So what you see behind you is an example of the K-5 Individualized Learning Pathways enrichment courses. So interestingly, the first couple of days of the week, students are engaged in individualized learning in the areas of English Language Arts and Mathematics. The teachers will work diligently to meet the needs of students, whether it be through challenging learning kind of activities, or they will work to support students that need additional support. Students will be flexibly grouped during this period to enable teachers to kind of differentiate instruction in the most appropriate manner. And then at the end of the week, all students will be engaged in something that's called school-wide enrichment, and that means it's enrichment that's delivered to each and every single student, not just students who qualify for gifted and talented education. So with that being said, you can see in Semester 1 and Semester 2, so every grade level is exposed to two enrichment courses throughout the year, and you can kind of get a sense of what the students will be exposed to at each grade level and in each semester. Okay? And once again, I'll post this on the website so that parents can see what everything is as well. The next slide that's behind me is the Grade 6 through 8 Junior Personal Growth Period, so the PGP period at the middle school. You'll see that there are a list of two-day courses and a list of one-day courses, and I think everyone could probably agree that these courses are pretty amazing. Our students are engaged in a range of different things, and there's actually a couple of classes that are not even on this list that we're offering as well. So you'll see it's a combination of STEM-oriented classes, courses that are focused on developing creativity, and there's also courses that are academically focused for those that would like to push themselves during this period as well. So some of the things that we're looking forward to next year, our high school global scholars have traveled the world, and these are some of the places that they've been since 2016. I'm proud to announce that this year's trip is planned for Greece in the fall. The 2021 trip is planned for the Galapagos Islands, and the 2022 trip is already planned for China. I also wanted to make a few comments about Passport to Learning. Our Passport to Learning program at the elementary school was kind of redesigned to match the same schedule that we have at the middle school level for Passport to Wellness. So you can kind of see what some of the courses are that we're offering in the Passport to Learning program at the elementary school level. Some of the things though that I want to point out that are really important that we're working on right now are ensuring that we're collecting the names of every child that is interested in being served dinner for this particular program at each of the elementary schools, and dinner is universally served and it's at no cost to all students. In addition to the enrichment classes that we're offering at Passport to Learning, we also offer free play and academic support as well. At the middle school level, we don't offer Passport to Learning, but we offer something called Passport to Wellness, and Passport to Wellness is in its second year. It's a whole heck of a lot easier now that the 6th graders are actually onsite here at the middle school. But these are just a couple of the activities that we're offering in the fall. We have our Codenum coding class and oil painting and band and junior thespians and chorus, and one of the things that parents ask us all the time is if our child cannot participate in after-school band, orchestra, chorus, junior thespians, does that mean they can't participate? We have multiple pathways for children to engage in all of those classes, both during the school day and after-school, and we've done that really to expand their choices and to be able to allow them to participate in as many things as possible. This particular program also includes academic support and dinner as well. New to the Passport to Learning program is something called We Passport, and we're really excited about this. So We Passport is starting in September. We've put it out on Facebook and we're actually already getting a whole host of likes and hearts and even some wows on Facebook, so it's really pretty neat. Mr. Delafave is going to have his hands full dealing with the registration, I believe. But needless to say, the point of creating We Passport kind of was developed out of the idea of inviting families of toddlers under the age of three years old into our schools for really neat activities, but also with every single event to dispel a myth about the Hoboken Public School District or to provide information about programs that our future students would be interested in. So each event will actually focus on not only a fun, free activity, but it will also focus on a program in the district that we would like to highlight for those families that decide to attend. So as we're winding down, there are a few points of pride that I think are really important that I want to highlight, not only for the public but also for the Board of Education. Not sure if you noticed, I believe it was last week, that Hoboken High School was highlighted on news12.com as the number-five school in the state of New Jersey in terms of growth in AP exams. So we were really proud of that, but it caused us to dive a little bit deeper into the data and to see what does that really mean? Does it just mean that we're offering more advanced placement exams? Does it mean that we are expanding our offerings? Does it mean that we're expanding the amount of students that are in our AP classes? The answer to that and to all of those questions is yes. And with that being said, we also noted a few other things that are really kind of points of pride for us, and that is not only are the number of students in advanced placement classes increasing, we have seen an increase from 2016 to 2019, but we're also reflecting in our data that the number of students that have scored three or higher on advanced placement exams at Hoboken High School has tripled over the past four years. So we're really happy about that. We're continuing to push each and every day, and those statistics are only going to increase. I think it's also important to know that we showed at Hoboken High School a 59-point increase in our SAT average since 2016, and with that increase, I had a few people ask me, "When you have increases like that, does that mean that you're lowering the amount of students who are actually taking the exams?" Interestingly, the answer to that is no. Our percentage continues to rise, and we have over 90% of our students that are taking both the PSATs and the SATs, which is actually one of the highest participation rates in the area. Our four-year graduation cohort rate has increased, I think six or seven years ago, we were right around 83%, and that has continued to rise every single year as a result of an extremely diligent high school administration and guidance department making sure that students are in school as much as possible and that they're focused on something extremely important, and that is graduating and having a clear path for the future. 96% of the class of 2019 was accepted to either a two- or a four-year college or university, so we were extremely proud of that. And the class of 2019 earned over $14 million in college and university merit scholarships, so we were thrilled about that as well. Moving from the high school level to the elementary school level, I think most of you already know this, but if you don't, Brant Elementary School, Calabro, Connors, and Wallace were all named Project Lead the Way National Schools of Distinction last school year. We actually had the elementary-level New Jersey State Steam Tank winner. It was a team out of Wallace Elementary School last year. Hoboken High School did a stellar job in the International Harvard Model Congress competition, taking home many awards, so we're really happy about that, and I just got confirmation today that the team is heading back to Spain for competition this school year as well. Hoboken Middle School won the Suit Up New Jersey Competition in the area of Business last year, and we also had a delegation from Ningbo, China visit us last school year to learn more about our STEM programs in the district at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. So that was something we were really, really proud about. As I conclude the presentation, I'd like to make a couple quick announcements regarding Back to School Night. So the Back to School Nights are on the slide behind me. You will notice that the L- You will notice that the elementary times have shifted. The elementary schools have decided this year to move their back-to-school nighttime from 5:00 to 6:30 in order to ensure that they do not interfere with Passport to Learning and that the faculty members that work both Passport to Learning and our classroom teachers have time to be able to participate in meaningful ways in the Back to School Night. So these are the dates for Back to School Night this year, and you should also take notice that there is a Passport to Learning Back to School Night that'll give parents the opportunity from all of our elementary schools to come to Wallace, one central location, and to learn all about the programs that their children are involved in at the elementary passport level, and also to meet all of the vendors and the teachers in those programs as well. So I'm not sure if anyone on the board has any questions regarding some of the things that we talked about tonight or that I presented out, but by all means, myself or Ms. Rodriguez Gomez can answer any of your questions. And once again, to the community and those of you who are here tonight, the presentation will be placed on the website by tomorrow morning.
I'll go first. Your entire presentation was full of positive and great news, so it was clearly a very busy summer, and I thank you. The points of pride make me really proud, and I would love to see that included in maybe our district newsletter and ideally pushed out to the broader community because these are extraordinary achievements, and we should really be proud of our students. Anyone else? No? All right. Thank you. Next, we're going to see if our business administrator has a report tonight. Ms. Good?
No.
No? As far as committee reports, we're not going to report out on those tonight. Everyone has received detailed information on agenda items and has had a chance, hopefully, to look through the agenda and ask questions. So does anyone have any additional questions for Dr. Johnson or anyone prior to our vote? No? Okay. Moving on to public comments. None? Okay. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Ms. Delara and Ms. Connor.
Is there any discussion or items that need to be pulled? No. Okay, Ms. Good, when you're ready, can you please take the roll call?
Ms. Katamatori?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Mr. Delator?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Clipper?
I need to abstain on 9.07 and 10.04 and then vote yes on everything else.
Ms. Takarian?
Yes.
Ms. Angler?
Yes.
Angley, I'm sorry. Motion passes.
Okay. Public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Nothing? Okay, well then that concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Who did the motion?
Ms. Katamatori and Ms. Evans. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.